Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the April 7th meeting of the East Hampton Town Board remotely livestreamed over LTV. Carol, would you please read the roll call?
Councilwoman Burke Gonzalez?
Present.
Councilman Lees?
Present.
Councilwoman Overby?
I believe Sylvia is muted.
Okay, it shouldn't be.
There you go.
All right, here.
Councilman Bragman?
Here.
Supervisor Vance Goyat?
Present, please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It has now been 25 days since I declared a state of emergency in East Hampton, and we are now in our 18th day of sheltering in place following Governor Cuomo's New York State pause order. We're seeing a rapid spread of COVID-19 begin to slow somewhat as a result of shutting down our economy and practicing social distancing. This is an encouraging sign, the sacrifices that we are making as saving lives and lessening the strain on our healthcare system. But this is not a time to be complacent. We must continue to follow the guidance of our scientists, healthcare professionals, and elected officials so as to ensure that we don't lose the gains that we're making. We need to stay home unless going out for food or other essential items, and to continue practice social distancing, staying at least six feet away from others who are out in the public. Regularly washing our hands and disinfecting commonly used surfaces like light switches and doorknobs, handrails, etc., will help prevent the spread of this disease. Anyone venturing out should now be wearing a face covering such as a bandana, scarf, or face mask. Please don't use N95 masks for this purpose, and those should be reserved only for healthcare workers. If you have these types of masks, please consider donating them to our local hospital in Southampton as they continue to be in short supply. We all owe a debt of gratitude for all those whose calling puts us in harm's way in the service of others, our police, our volunteer firefighters, and emergency services professionals. I'm grateful to our social workers and for all those who are grocery workers, truck drivers, making sure that there's food that continues to be on our shelves. I'm grateful to our dedicated town employees who keep local government functioning at this time. I'm also grateful for the kindness and generosity of all the many volunteers who donate their time and money to help those in need, most of all, right now, the doctors, nurses, nurses, and other healthcare workers on the frontline battle who are doing all they can to help save lives. Please do your part by staying healthy and not spreading the virus. Today, our agenda includes a public comment period, as well as we'll be talking about a number of other things. We'll be giving a further COVID-19 update. We'll be discussing fence legislation and cell code revisions and registry, followed by some updates from liaison reports. So at this time, I'd like to switch over to public comment. There's a dial-in number and access code, which if you dial in, you'll be placed into a queue, and we'll take your call in the order that we receive them. Please, if you can, keep your comments and questions brief, and that'll allow everybody to get an opportunity to participate. At this time, Jason, if you'd start queuing, anyone who's called in to make a public comment, we'd appreciate it. Okay, thank you, Jason. In that case, while we wait to see if anyone calls in, we can continue to do an update. At this time, I'm just going to pull up the most recent statistics. So currently now in Suffolk County, there are 1,500, excuse me, 15,444 confirmed cases, and the number of cases range from the highest number in any one town of 3788 cases in Islip. East Hampton is currently listed as having 63 cases, and this was last updated at 8/26 this morning. The number of cases per thousand in the communities ranges from a high of about 11 cases per thousand of population in Islip to East Hampton, which is at the low end, at 2.8 cases per thousand. We have seen the numbers continue to rise here in East Hampton, and again, I think every effort to socially distance and take steps to prevent the spread of the disease will certainly help us. As I said earlier on, it looks like the last couple of days that the number of cases coming in has slowed somewhat. Hopefully, this will be a trend and that we'll be reaching the apex of this curve, but it has taken us nearly a month to get to this point, and if the number of cases is in a similar profile on the downside, it may take as much as another month before we get down to a number of cases that would indicate that we're moving beyond the most crucial points of this pandemic. The New York pause order has been extended by the governor until April 29th. That includes the closure of schools and social distancing protocols. Again, the most recent advice that we're getting from the CDC and the Surgeon General is that face coverings should be used anytime anyone's going out shopping for groceries or public place. Couple of other developments that are important is that those who've had COVID-19 and have recovered are being asked to consider making blood plasma donations as this is being used, plasma is being used for those who are most critically ill. The antibodies that are contained within the plasma of a recovered victim can be used to help save lives. So if you're in that category where you have, in fact, had a confirmed case of the disease and fully recovered, please consider making a blood plasma donation. You can contact the Red Cross or New York Blood Center or Mount Sinai Hospital. All three of those organizations are looking for donors at this time. I think that's pretty much all I wanted to say at this point with regard to COVID. Kathy, do you have an update for us on human services as it relates to our ongoing efforts to help the public and those in need?
I do. So I just, I know I've said this at all of the previous meetings, but new people are tuning in, so I just bear with me some of it you've heard before. The town of East Hampton's Human Services Department continues to provide assistance to seniors and other community members in need. They operate Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at their offices on Springs Fireplace Road. Those in need of assistance are asked to call the department at (631) 329-6939. Human Services staff continues to make weekly wellness calls. Currently, over 500 residents are receiving these calls, and they serve as wellness checks to seniors and to ascertain if residents are in need of assistance. Close to 60% of those called are reporting that they're doing well, but some clients are experiencing the negative effects due to social isolation. So the Human Services staff are contacting these clients on a daily basis to give them the much-needed daily social contact. We're still preparing meals right now. We're distributing five frozen meals along with oatmeal, fresh fruit, and tea bags. They can be delivered directly to the seniors' homes by our staff or directly picked up at curbside at the senior center. Currently, 170 seniors are receiving meals each week. Yesterday alone, we distributed 305 meals, and all told, were up to 1,595 meals that have been distributed since the senior center closed. Regarding delivery of groceries, prescriptions, and other essentials, so town staff and local volunteers continue to be available to pick up and deliver free of charge groceries, prescriptions, and other essentials. The free pickup and delivery will be from local merchants who accept prepaid phone orders. Those are our larger markets as well as pharmacies and hardware stores. This is the same model that both the towns of Southampton and Riverhead are using. Please note that these deliveries are available Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Early on, Human Services staff was going grocery shopping for seniors, but that has become much too time-consuming, and there was concern that the staff were spending hours in the grocery store each day, and many are over 60 themselves, which is why we're now going to the model of working with local merchants who accept prepaid phone orders. Those merchants that we've reached out to are looking forward to working with the town and providing curbside pickup for our staff. We're currently working on a full list of local merchants who will take these prepaid orders, and we're going to be posting that on the website this week. And it should also be noted that East End Cares has volunteer shopping buddies. Should seniors desire more extensive shopping, and you can email them at eastendcares1@gmail.com, and they have been a tremendous community partner. As of yesterday, the Human Services Department has been split into two teams, working alternate days at the senior center and at home. Utilizing the two-team approach is very similar to how the sanitation and highway departments are operating. This way, if one team, God forbid, has a confirmed case, the other team can ideally keep the department up and running. What I've observed in the last few weeks is that the mechanisms to help our seniors as well as those in our community who struggle with food insecurities are already in place, so we really shouldn't be trying to reinvent the wheel. However, this tremendous safety net that was already in place is being pulled on like never before. So when folks call and text me and ask, "How can I help?", I suggest they consider making a donation to our local food pantries. There are three in town, East Hampton, Springs, and Montauk, and donations can be made directly through their websites. Also, consider supporting our local restaurants and their employees by ordering takeout once a week. During these uncertain times, fear, anxiety, and loss can be overwhelming, but I want to reassure everyone that there are a lot of good people working quietly and compassionately throughout our town, helping our neighbors in need. They just need our financial support to continue their good work. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Kathy, and I appreciate you emphasizing the point that monetary donations are being sought for the food pantries. Also, consider donating to Eleanor Whitmore Early Childhood Center, which is offering for first responders and other essential workers, healthcare, grocery, delivery people, etc., childcare five days a week, and that's from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. for children ages 18 months and 12 years old. These services are being provided for those crucial and essential workers at no cost, however, does require funding. So if you could please consider donating to the Eleanor Whitmore Center, which is ewecc.org, and you can look them up and make contact with them. They're providing really crucial work at this time, both for first responders and critical workers as well as others in the community on an availability basis. At this point, any other board members have something they want to add about COVID-19 and the ongoing efforts of the town? If not, we'll move on.
I can add nothing, Peter. I'm sorry, I thought you saw me.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I just wanted to add that East End Cares, which has really done a great job of supporting needs in the town and helping the government actually, and has a new telephone number, and it's (646) 456-8845. They're setting up a buddy system to try to stay in touch with people that are more vulnerable and maybe cast a slightly wider net in the community. So the number is (646) 456-8845, and it's a way for local folks who may need a little extra reassurance to get it. And I just wanted to mention that, as the board knows, I had a client contact me over the weekend, and he happened to have a connection to companies that manufacture clothing, and it turned out one of them was manufacturing personal protection equipment, some of which is in short supply, and we were able to connect the town actually to this company, and the town was able to place an order for equipment that they needed. So it's another reason for folks to stay in touch with town board members so we can pass along this information and help each other out. I also talked to someone on the Southampton Hospital Board about the PPE, Personal Protection Equipment, with the same offer, and they indicated that they felt that their supplies, their supply lines were strong at the moment, but they also welcomed contributions of that kind of equipment. So if anyone has access to that, Southampton Hospital is always ready to take donations.
We appreciate it.
The good news about the hospital is they did express some degree of confidence that they're, they have the facilities right now to handle, to handle the burden that they have from the disease. They emphasize that it's a fluid situation, but they felt that they were in reasonably good shape at the moment.
Thank you for that, Jeff, and, you know, we do live in a pretty remarkable place with regards to the number of people who have connections that reach right out to worldwide manufacturing and whatnot. My office has fielded literally dozens of calls from individuals in the area who've stepped up and said that I can help in this way. We've had a number of similar connections, as you mentioned, to folks who had access to personal protective equipment, and, you know, that has really helped bolster Southampton's hospital capacity as well as the capacity of our own first responders in terms of having enough personal protective equipment. As you know, this is something that's really in a worldwide shortage, and particularly in a shortage here in New York, where we're at the, pretty much the epicenter within the United States of this outbreak. And while, you know, New York City has shown in the last few days some leveling off, Long Island had continued to spike, and now we're seeing a little, hopefully, a little bit of leveling off now. But as you said, the capacity of the hospital right now is in good shape. We've been in constant contact with both the hospital as well as the, through the EOC in Suffolk, for all of Suffolk County. Our Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, Bruce Bates, and the Chief of Police, Mike Sarlow, and I speak multiple times a day, and there's been really good communication amongst all the electeds on Long Island. The Suffolk County Exec, Steve Bologna, has done an excellent job of pulling together daily calls with all the town supervisors within Suffolk and the mayors as well to share information, to help each other understand problems that we foresee coming and ways to deal with them. One of the things that's been in discussion is, you know, some of the deadlines that municipalities face, whether it be for voting or elections, budgets, as well as tax collection. Currently, elections have been put off primaries to June 23rd, where some of the villages who had elections scheduled in March have been pushed back. They're still trying to figure out when those election days for those entities will take place, but right now, all of the presidential primary and many of the other elections will be held on June 23rd. There's also been discussion about delaying some of the requirements for tax assessors, grievances, and whatnot. So we'll make the public aware of those changes as we get definitive word. And again, you know, I think we're in a pretty good place right now as long as people continue to follow the basic rules of social distancing, sheltering in place as much as possible. I know it's going to be difficult for some, especially as the weather improves, there's going to be, you know, a sense of normalcy returning, where you see a resurgence of life in the spring and whatnot. People are going to want to get out in the fresh air, which is okay to do, provided you follow those rules, and be very careful about coming anywhere near someone else. And again, wear a face covering if you do go out. You know, we are blessed with many natural places to go and visit and to hike and recreate and exercise, but again, let's be very careful about doing so in a, in a safe and prudent manner so that we're not going to be in this situation of having to deal with this disease any longer than we absolutely have to.
If I can add just add one other thing, I wanted to actually thank Kathy for this adjustment to the, that the HR is making, you know, to add pickups and deliveries with local merchants like the ASAP program in Southampton. I mentioned that a while ago, and I think it's great that she was, made the adjustment because it's going to expand the reach of HR department. I just wanted to say that.
You mean the Human Services?
I'm sorry, it's Human Services. Thank, thank you, Kathy.
Actually, Jeff, we've been, we've been doing that all along. You know, we've been going to grocery stores and picking up things for folks, where really this is actually dialing it back a little. We were actually doing more than what Southampton and Riverhead were doing, but now because of, you know, the amount of time it's taking to go into the grocery stores to shop for someone, it's two or three hours by the time you get the list, you get their card, you shop, things are out of stock. It's, it was just so time-consuming, and again, our, number of our staff members are over 60. Doing the prepaid is actually dialing it back a little bit, but, you know, we're, you know, we're more comfortable with that at this stage.
Yeah, I appreciated hearing that explanation because I've been, I've been hearing that from some folks that they can't do it anymore, and they were concerned, but that makes sense to me. And I'm glad that getting the local merchants in, it's a good idea for the economy as well as serving people with this ASAP program, so it's good.
Just like to speak a little bit more about being out and about and some of the town facilities. We've closed all the town playgrounds and the playground equipment, and many of the parks, while they still remain open, the sports facilities on those parks are closed, and people should not be using them. We, you know, cordoned off some of the basketball hoops. We've had people who have taken those protective closure devices off and so they could play again. You know, please don't use these courts. We're taking the nets down on the town tennis, tennis courts as well. Again, you know, the longer, the longer we're in this, the more restrictive we're going to have to get. So when you go to the beaches, we've put up signs at the beaches reminding people about social distancing and that failure to comply with these basic rules of not gathering and social distancing may require us at some point to actually close our beaches off. We don't want to do that, so please obey the rules and the regs and so that we can all recreate in a safe way.
Peter, can I add on to that from Parks and Rec? It goes a little bit to what you were just stating, is that the town of East Hampton has now closed all tennis, volleyball, and basketball courts and nets. The nets are down. Still, the skate park and the youth park in Ambigant, skate park in Montauk, youth park, also Montauk are closed to the public, and also playgrounds. Peter is correct, there are individuals that are unfortunately taking down some of the hindrances to the basketball courts that the buildings and grounds put up. Please keep those up there. Again, you're going against the executive orders of the governor, and again, you're going against all the wishes of the town of East Hampton. The sooner that we conform to what's needed right now, the sooner we get back to our natural play. If you don't mind me going into one, another part, almost as my liaison report, is in sanitation. In sanitation right now is one of the busiest locations in the town of East Hampton. Currently is working on the same schedule, but that could potentially change if needed. There's a large amount of individuals using the recycling centers, both in Montauk and in East Hampton, and specifically, probably because either they're nesting at home, getting rid of stuff, or it's just spring cleanouts and too. Please maintain social distancing while you're at our recycling centers. Just because they're open doesn't mean you have to gather, talk to your friends, please go in, take care of your health and safety issues as far as getting rid of your refuse, and please just go home after then, too. It's extremely important to us all. In public works right now, please notice that in Montauk, there will be essential draining and draining, drain projects and paving projects still moving forward, and also they're finishing up the head of the harbor bulkheading projects, which are essential and allowed. Our town fisheries, Peter and I have discussed this. I've also gotten guidance from Governor Cuomo, and I've been in discussions with Councilwoman Julie Loftstead from Southampton. We are going to look for ways to sustain our fisheries by trying to assist our fisheries with getting their catches directly to the market locally. I hopefully will have some more guidance and information out very shortly, once we hear back from the Chair of the Marine Resources from the DEC, and also in discussions with Julie then, too, to give them some relief and see how they can get their fresh marketed food here locally. Maybe we can do that part of our services that we're doing through, through senior services then, too. If you don't mind me just talking about families, we all have families right now. I have, I have three children inside on the computers doing homework. That's why I'm outside right now. Homeschooling has become an essential. I think our kids want it. Please, as parents out there, please continue assisting them. It takes patience. I'll be honest, some of that math, I'm not great at it right now, but I try my best. Be very patient with your kids. It really just shows how important our teachers are to our community right now, so enjoy that time that we have. Increase your children's confidence. Talk to them by why we're doing this, why we're inside. That will decrease their level of anxiety. Let's make the best of this family time if we can, and don't forget to call your senior friends or your grandparents just to say hi. Lastly, if you don't mind me just saying this, and then I'll be done. This is a week of hope and resurrection for many. So shall the weeks ahead be for our town and all of East Hampton's residents, businesses, and our quality of life out here. We are at a precipice, a very crucial time. Let's listen to the Vice of Peter Supervisor's Office, the other electeds, the Chief of Police, who's doing a wonderful job right now, and our health professionals. Let's stay at home, let's be, continue our social distancing. We can get through this together. We can't do this as an individual. It's going to take all of us. With that, we will all resurrect, and we all get past this. That's my hope for this week. I thank you for that time.
Thank you, David. Any other board members want to make a comment before we move into our agenda item? So I think that's, staying home is a good segue to talking about fencing. And as some may know, and certainly all the board members know, we've, we've discussed and proposed changes to the town's fencing legislation multiple times. We've had a couple different hearings on this. One of the aspects of the fencing legislation deals with agricultural fencing, which at this point is pretty much crucial to being able to grow any kind of food crops, given the area's deer population, and especially vegetable crops. And so as there are a number of properties that are in need of, of this type of fencing, I'd like to, at the bare minimum, move, try to move forward on the ag fencing portion. But we have Nancy Lynn Thiel, who's our town, one of our town attorneys, senior town attorney, who is here with us today to present an overview of that legislation and update us on its progress. So Nancy Lynn, if you would like to step in now and take over.
Hey, Peter, did you, did you want to? I did, I just wanted, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Sylvia. Yes, go ahead Sylvia.
So I just wanted to say, you know, this, we heard this as a public, one of the iterations of this, as a public hearing back in July, and it just sort of didn't move forward after that. So I think what Nancy Lynn and I have looked at is making sure that we move this forward partly because of the fencing for agriculture. And we think it's an important part of the legislation that hasn't really, that needs to be moved forward. But in that, we also wanted to make sure that definitions for other types of fencing and helping our Architectural Review Board give them some better direction, which is what I think this does. So I'm, you know, sorry that we, that it took so long, but I'm glad we were able to pick it up and have Nancy Lynn look at the public comments from July and move this on, move this forward.
Thank you Sylvia. I just wanted to remind the board, the legislative intent for the entire proposal was to clarify that gates, pillars, and posts are structures that are integral components of a fence or a wall, and that they require approval by the Architectural Review Board. They do that now, but I think it's more helpful to the general public if that's actually in the legislation so that if, if someone's looking at our code, there, there's no confusion. The clarity is, is important. It's also intended to allow the Architectural Review Board the discretion as to height limits of fences, gates, pillars, and posts when the property's principal use is agriculture. And that's what, Peter, you were referring to. Or when the proposed placement of the structure is a certain distance from the pavement of a public street. These are ones that if, if the board will recall are when there are houses placed a great deal of distance from the roadway, the actual original intent of having a, a height limitation. That intent can continue to be honored without having to impose that on someone whose house is half mile up their property. Excuse me, not half mile, acre up their property anyway. And then it's also intended to provide setback limitations for structures that are related to the driveway of a, of a property. And that's the Fire Marshal said asked for that. That's in, to enhance pub, public safety. That with things like keypads and pillars and so on, so forth. We already have it for new construction. It would just be expanding it if you were putting in a gate on a driveway and putting in keypads. Our Architectural Review Board tried to do that with their discretion, but it would be more helpful and clarify for those who are looking to put in gates and keypads, what is, what the expectation is. So as I said, I'm not going to go through all of the sections. The last section that we were discussing or there were concerns about was whether or not we would be determining distance when there was the exception or the discretion for agricultural fencing in agricultural use. We had talked about whether it be 10 feet from the property line or the edge of pavement. This language now clarifies it's at a setback at least 10 feet from the property line or the edge of pavement of the public street, whichever, whichever is farther. So that if someone is, is unsure and uses the pavement line, the pavement line is obviously going to not be on their property. That's going to be on the public street. That way we know that they have at least that 10 feet setback that, that the board was looking for. That was the only item that we looked for some clarification from, from public comment. The only other public comment was there was some request for the board to consider increasing the height limitations in general to allow for some prefabbed fencing. And I don't believe that the board was really interested in going beyond our current height limitations that we have. But though, that was the only changes. So that would be the only difference in the language from what the board considered back in July now to what, what, what I have drafted at this point and for your consideration of whether you want to go forward on that.
Nancy Lynn, do you want to talk about the, the building inspector does have the authority already in the code?
Yes.
To be able to look at dimensions and, and vary it by six inches. If there's a little bit of a drop off and they have to have a little bit higher fence or a post, then they, there is that ability already built in that we've, that the building inspector already uses.
Yes, that already, that's built into this language. And with that, ARB has been considering that and know that when they recommend something that is ready for a C of O, if it's within that, that six inches of discretion that the building inspector has, they have not been saying it's not ready for a C of O. They've, they've let it go forward for a C of O because they're realizing that, you know, it, it's a little difficult to keep everything at exactly the same height when you're talking about putting fencing on, on perhaps uneven property. But they already have that six inches. If we were to give an additional six inches, now we're talking a foot, and that really gets into increasing our height limitations. So that six inches that's already in our code would be incorporated and reiterated in, in this language as well.
Can I ask a question? I didn't see that in the language here. Is there a reference to that here?
It is. And.
So, so Jeff, Nancy Lynn sent an email.
I have the statutes. I, I'm aware of them. I have both of them.
Okay.
I looked at the, I looked at the law. I have it. I'm just saying, I didn't see that. I, I went through it line by line. I didn't see a reference to the.
If you look on page four, under paragraph C, height limits, under the sub-paragraph one.
I'm sorry, hang on, hang on. You went a little fast there Nancy.
Sorry.
What, what paragraph you talk, page four?
Height limits under paragraph one, the very last line. The height of a fence, gate, pillar, poster, wall shall be subject to the provisions of 255-10-40C. That is, that is the provision that gives the building inspector, the contractor's errors is what it's referred to.
Oh, great. Okay, great. Glad to see that. I didn't, I didn't see that as a change from the old law to the new law. Great. I'm glad to see that. I just, I just thought that it was important to have it in the law somewhere where, so that it's complete and everybody knows all the rules. Thank you very much. We've talked about that and I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, for myself Nancy Lynn. I know I've been on the zoning board in the past and pillars. So I think a clear definition of pillars is extremely important. That it's an aggregate of all the ornamentation or the lighting that goes on the pillars. And I think the next thing would be then the policy for any application that comes in, if it's ARB, ZBA, planning board, for those pillars to be measured, part of the survey, surveyors work. But that's more of a policy than a legislative work. So that definition to me is something I've seen in the past, and I think that's important to add to the legislation. I thank you.
No problem.
I just wanted to ask you, I know we've had some changes on the ARB. Have they, has the ARB reviewed this legislation?
I haven't taken it back to the ARB to review. The sections that the board had looked at in the past and had requested have not had any changes. So they are comfortable with the concepts and the language that we've had here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
So at this time, do we, do we need to go out for another public hearing with this legislation, with the changes that were made?
It would need to be presented for another public hearing in order for us to move forward on this. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So in the timing schedule then, if we're comfortable with public hearing, we would notice it on the 16th and we would hear it the first Thursday in May then. Is that correct, Nancy Lynn?
We can do that, yes.
So that would be that May 7th meeting night.
Yeah, I think that would be important to do specifically for some of the ag aspect here. Somebody, if there's, if it's getting nicer outside, I think they would want to make that investment if they wanted to this season, sooner the better. So I appreciate, Sylvia, you bringing this back.
Thank you.
So is the board in agreement that we should schedule this for a public hearing for May 7th?
Yes.
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 And at, at this point, we are still waiting for further guidance on the, the legal method in which we can hold a public hearing while social distancing. There's been a lot of discussion back and forth amongst all the local municipalities and we're, we're seeking state guidance on the particulars of that, so that we can stay, you know, stay as normal as possible with regard to continuing our public hearings and still fulfilling all the requirements, the legal requirements of holding such a public hearing if you can't have the public present. There's been discussion about having the opportunity for members of the public to teleconference in during a public hearing. But to date, we don't have firm guidance. So as soon as we get firm guidance, we'll be able to move forward with some certainty that we're following all the necessary procedures in, in these unprecedented times. So at this point, we'll go ahead and plan on scheduling the public hearing and hopefully we'll be able to have it at that time.
Right.
So moving on, we have our, our next discussion today is going to be about cell towers and.
Peter, if you don't mind me, I just, you know, just to give you a little precursor here. Sylvia and I have been working on this proposed changes to the personal services facilities.
Yeah, David, if you just give me just a second here, I just wanted to say that this next agenda item is for cell code revisions. And I, I know that you and Sylvia have been working on looking at this and potential registry. With regard to cell legislation, you know, our current legislation is outdated and obsolete with regard to the FCA, FCC requirements, which pretty much are over, override our current town code in many ways. And so that we need to make those adjustments to have it more in conformance with what the federal government actually allows us to do. So it's really in, in, in view of that, that we're, we're taking this on. And I appreciate that there's also been some discussion about the registry. But I'll let you go back and, and take it from here, David. I appreciate that.
No problem, Peter. I think you hit some of the, the most pertinent points is that our current code that, you know, Sylvia and I were looking at. And I really want to thank Eric Schantz, who's here, Jameson McWilliams and all, Town Attorney, and then also Eddie Schnell on this. As being our eyes and ears in the field, that our current code is, you know, more than 20 years old right now, and it's not in conformance with federal guidelines. And we see the interactions on our regulatory boards being hindered by this to a point. So we're looking as a township, as we should, to update the code where we see there's inconsistencies or, or need to try to stay within the stated intentions of good public safety and community character. We see our applications either for modifications, new applications on the increase in the rise. And that's just part of the new technology age that we, we are in right now. The applications, I think, also take a large commitment of time to our planning staff right now also, who are great at this, but it, it is just something that wasn't seen 20 years ago, how much time it was going to take. So potentially as we discuss this as a board, we mentioned this could be a source of registry, of non-taxable revenue that we might be able to assist with outside council, engineering needs, or potential increases in staff. So I think that's why we, Sylvia, I wanted to bring this to the board to look at it comprehensively. Sylvia, I don't know if you have anything else?
No, I just appreciate the planning department, Eric Schantz in particular, for really working on this. Jameson's done a great job from the attorney's office. And so I, I think they're going to have a presentation for us today. So, you know, it's something necessary. We use cell phones now. We don't even use our landlines as much as we used to, although I still have one. But, so, you know, but this is the way we communicate these days and we need to come up and, and we need to redo, as David was saying, we need to make sure that our code mimics what's going on, on the federal level and the state level. So thank you, David.
So Eric, I believe has a PowerPoint presentation to run through with this. Is that right, Eric?
Yes. Can everyone hear me?
Well, you can.
Okay. I will check with Jason, just to make sure that this comes up for you. Can you still hear me? And can you see the PowerPoint presentation?
I can hear you fine, but the, the PowerPoint presentation isn't up just yet. I do have my own, my own copy here, but.
I think Jason won. Okay. Share screen and then hit that right there.
And here comes the smart board. Excellent.
Yay, excellent.
Got it?
That's great.
Got it?
Yep.
Excellent.
Okay. So as Peter, David, and Sylvia said, these are proposed changes to personal wireless service facilities or cell sites. This first slide is the team that's been discussing this. And you'll see the names there. Our mission here is to amend the town code sections related to cell coverage, to coordinate them with federal law, address the needs of community for adequate cell service, and to maintain public safety, property values, open spaces, scenic areas, and other resources which contribute to the community character of East Hampton. We're not looking to add cell towers. We're looking to meet the community's needs while also coordinating that with the community's, the existing character of the community and the community's values. So here are some examples in pictures of different cell sites. From left to right, you'll see a monopole, standard monopole with an arm array. In the middle is the lattice tower that is right here at Town Hall with also arm arrays. And then we have building mounted cell sites. This is the Montauk Tower. Carl Fisher, obviously iconic building in Montauk. And then some other ones, we have a stealth monopole. This is at the landfill. This was built very recently. And that's on the left. And then on the right is a 70-foot tall utility pole mounted facility on Naperville Meadow Road. So since 2002, we've had 78 applications, 24 for new facilities, 45 more modifications. Most of these require multiple planning board meetings, meetings to be deemed complete, at least five, which would put you at, you know, nearly 400 times that these applications have been for the board in the past 20 years. The number is increasing significantly. And actually, we have six new facilities pending. This graph shows five, but we have a new one that just was submitted on Monday. You'll see there was a spike in 2004, but other than that, most of these applications are new applications within the past 10 years. So there's modifications and new facilities. They're pretty self-explanatory in those terms. Modifications are modifying new, existing facilities. New facilities are new wireless facilities where they did not previously exist. We have a tiering process. There's tier one, two, and three, with three being the most significant, that being a new cell tower. Tier one is just on utility poles or existing rooftops. Tier two are modifications or co-locations on existing towers. So that's basically the way that our applications are broken down. So when an application is received, it's received by the planning board, it's reviewed by the planning department, usually me, for the past few years. It's discussed at a planning board work session until it's deemed complete. Again, that usually takes multiple meetings. The planning board decides whether or not to hold a public hearing if it's a tier two application. All new facilities must go through SECR and public hearings are automatically required for those. The board can't waive the public hearing for them. And then ultimately, the planning. And then ultimately, the planning board makes its decision. Right now, we have some new challenges. There are new... The wireless master plan was adopted in 2001. It was actually formulated in 1998. Obviously, it doesn't need to be said that the technology of, you know, cell technology has changed since then. New federal laws now prevent the town in large part from enforcing its adopted standards. Our code says that the planning board can't consider coverage restrictions. Federal law now says you must consider coverage restrictions. Federal law also established a shot clock, a time limitation on review, which really limits the planning board's ability to require additional information. We have difficulties in monitoring facilities due to the increased number of applications. Applications come in one at a time, so it's tough to figure out whether or not somebody is overloading a tower. And then, surprise, surprise, some carriers perform work without the necessary approvals, and that's very difficult to keep track of. Additionally, coordination of emergency services communications needs with cell carriers is a big issue. I know Eddie Schnell has some significant concerns about this. We have stricter standards for cell towers than we do for emergency services, so we do have some carriers who are trying to sort of back end their way into an approval by saying they're just for emergency services, but once those towers go up, it's almost impossible to prevent a carrier from co-locating on such a structure. So the group has come up with some recommendations, short term, medium term, and long term. Short term, hire a consultant with access to RF engineering professionals to review applications for new facilities. The federal law significantly limits the town's discretion to deny or approve an application where a gap in cell coverage can be demonstrated. We need a consultant that has RF engineering capability to determine whether or not there truly is a gap in coverage. Also, we recommend that you enforce our registry requirement. I know that Jamison has drafted some legislation for you already in regard to that. The town has a registry requirement. It does not have a fee for that registry requirement, but it's already on the books. It's something that's been in the code since 2001, and this will help town staff keep track of the changes to the individual sites. And then again, you know, touching on it again, if the town is going to be hiring consultants and doing, you know, being more proactive on this and expending funds on maintaining cell sites, you should consider fee schedule changes. Again, the registry, there's no fee for it. We don't charge people for it. We just charge them by application. I went back, I was unable to find the exact chain of the changes in fees for applications, but I believe that we have not changed our fee schedule for wireless applications for at least 10 years. So medium term, we should have a consultant produce a coverage map showing needed areas and coordinate with planning and other departments to find suitable locations within those areas for new facilities, and create a list of properties that the town board can vet at a public hearing and have the public discuss that and vote on it. This will better coordinate cell coverage, and it gives the community a chance to, you know, it's very tricky for a neighbor when all of a sudden they have an application for a property right next to them. It's the best way to do any type of planning is to do it comprehensively and to have a plan that can be brought in front of the town board. Everybody can be notified, and the community as a whole can look at it and decide whether or not they think a particular property is appropriate, you know, whether or not a cell installation should go someplace else. When you kind of surprise them with a specific application, it, you know, there's less transparency there. So the other recommendation I would say is consider making modifications, swapouts of equipment where there's really no major additions. Make them essentially an administrative application that would only be reviewed by the planning department. We are, you know, I didn't get into the federal law, the new federal law requirements in this PowerPoint presentation, but we're under extreme time constraints based on those new federal laws, and I believe that for the most part, most swapouts are pretty straightforward. I've even heard from most of the planning board members on a lot of these applications saying, "Why are we reviewing this? Why is this in front of us? We don't need to be reviewing this." Obviously, that's the details of that need to be worked out, but I think that most of the wireless applications we get can be handled administratively and expedited in accordance with federal law. So that's a medium-term goal. Long term, and this is probably the big thing, hire a consultant to review the wireless master plan. The town code sections on wireless are based off the master plan, and recommend changes to streamline it with federal law while still preserving the community goals regarding property values, safety, open spaces, scenic areas, and aesthetic resources. We need to really completely... We need to have somebody who has experience in this field look at the town code and completely revamp it, because again, as I say, I mean, it was adopted in 2001, it's not quite 20 years, but it really was crafted in 1998. You, you know, you can't have a code section that's 20 years old for something like wireless service. It simply does not match what the current reality is. It doesn't match what the current laws are, and it's something that is very long overdue. It's something that's very much burdening staff, and it's something that I believe if the town streamlined this process, the cell carriers would be very grateful, and I think that the town is overlooking a potential significant source of revenue that I think that the carriers would not mind complying with, provided they could... they could have an expedited review and have a guarantee that the town would be complying with the applicable laws. So that's basically it. And anybody have any questions? I'm right here.
Thank you, Eric. I think that the committee's done a really terrific job of overviewing and highlighting what's needed in terms of going forward. Clearly, I think having a comprehensive approach to cell coverage within our township is very important. As you said, you know, this current legislation that we are operating under was basically developed in 1998, and you think about how much cell phones have changed. I think I probably had my first cellphone right about that time, which is more like a brick than a phone that we know today. And, you know, currently, cell phones are used as personal computers, really. So they're an integral part of modern life, and where I think in 1998, people weren't too concerned about the coverage. Certainly, that's become a critical issue for many today, especially with landlines becoming something of the past. So I appreciate this work. I do think that there's a lot here to take in and think about in terms of, you know, the immediate and short term. I understand the need to really have RF engineering professionals to be able to review the applications, because part of, as you said, what's required is that we have to consider coverage. So for us to be able to understand whether there are in fact gaps that exist in coverage or not with a particular application, that's going to be helpful. So, you know, I think all these are really good recommendations. Does the board have any comments or questions for Eric about any of this, this point?
I have just one quick question. Do you have an idea of how many cell phone installations we have, towers, rooftops? Just a general idea of what the inventory is that we'll be dealing with? I don't have an exact number, simply because it's tough to keep track of, and I don't know the number in the, in East Hampton Village or Dag Harbor Village, but my count within the town of East Hampton proper is 43.
And Eric, is that 43 individual sites or 43 carriers per site?
Well, there's technically, there's only three carriers now. T-Mobile and Sprint have merged essentially. So there's T-Mobile, Sprint, Verizon, and AT&amp;T. So yeah, that's 43 individual sites amongst those three carriers.
And those could vary from a major tower monopole to an installation which is enclosed within a cupola in an existing building, or for instance, at the tower in Montauk, there are antennas there. There are also a number of co-location sites such as water towers that contain antennas. So there's really a myriad of installations all over. They're not all just simply towers, standalone monopoles or lattice towers.
Absolutely. Most of our major towers will hold, you know, do accommodate all of the main carriers, because obviously, you know, they're tall, everybody wants to be on those structures. But yeah, we have water towers, the Montauk Tower, Home Sweet Home in Wayne Scott, the Montauk Community Church, which just approved to have a rooftop installation. There's an installation within the sort of faux lighthouse at Montauk Yak Club. There's very many different designs.
I think that demonstrates just how ubiquitous, you know, cell antennas and coverage and use has become. They're kind of popping up everywhere, and I guess, as I've discovered very recently, there's an effort to expand fiber optic cable throughout the town and which may include some 5G antennas to provide the next gen of cell service within the town. Eric, have you gotten any information directly about any of that effort that's ongoing? I'm still waiting to hear back from Altice's Government Affairs Officer regarding the expansion of fiber optic cable throughout the town.
I haven't heard anything personally. I haven't... I know for a fact we don't have any applications that are 5G. I haven't heard anything about extending cabling throughout the town. So I don't know if there's talk going on, but if there is, I have not heard it. Are those subject, is that typically subject to planning board review, that kind of swapout?
I believe that the fiber optic cable that we're seeing expanded throughout town is not subject to, if fall under, you know, the same...
Utility.
Utility. It's on existing utility poles, and it's considered a utility, does not require road opening permits or any approvals from the town. It's exempt.
So public utilities that are operating within their easements or whatever their, you know, whatever their ownership rights are, don't typically go to the plan?
No, they don't.
Right.
Are there any other questions regarding this topic?
Yeah, I just...
There's a... Go ahead, Kathy.
And I was just going to say that I support the proposal, and I appreciate the committee putting this together, because I know we've been having conversations about this, that this nearly needed to, we needed to move forward here. The only thing that I wanted to raise is in the mission statement. I think that where it says we want to address the needs of the community for adequate cell service, personally, I don't... I'd like to strike adequate, because I think what we really need is uniform cell service throughout the town so that we don't have pockets where there's... I would think the mission would be so that, you know, everywhere throughout the town you could get, you know, service.
So consistent cell service or...
Consistent, uniform, yeah, you know.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I have a... Jamison, if you don't mind, if you're there, and it's mostly about the short term, and we were talking about the cell phone registry, and it was considering a fee schedule change. I believe that fee schedule change can be done through a resolution only if the town board determined an amount also. And a little bit of that might go even into the medium term, is that there's many admin applications. And the next point on that is with the admin applications, it still means a carrier will send in a team of their so-called experts or their legal team to the planning board for multiple meetings. So that's multiple time that those providers will actually be paying their team for services that they might rather just pay a registry instead of time to their lawyers and their RF experts. Is that one of the ways I'm looking at it, Jamison and Eric?
Yes, I think that one of the suggestions that Eric had about the fees was a good one in the sense that if some of these swapouts could be done administratively, that exactly what you just said, David, that if we may be able to increase the fees slightly for those applications, because there would probably still be a savings, quote unquote, to the applicant during the process, because instead of having to come to multiple meetings, then they usually do send out a pretty large team and, you know, it's sit through three, four-hour planning board meeting with two, three, four experts for multiple meetings. They would submit their documents to the planning department, and it would be done administratively, so there would not be the need to send all of those people to many meetings. If that were the case, then maybe we would be justified in increasing that fee slightly so that we would generate some more income or, you know, generate some money to the town to perhaps pay for an extra employee or whatever we would need on the staffing end of it to offset being able to move things along more quickly, which would also be more applicant-friendly.
Well, I think having the increased number of applications that we have and the amount of review time that is having to be devoted to these applications, that certainly is well within line to expect that we would, you know, increase our fee schedule in a way that would reflect that additional use of town resources. So I certainly support that idea.
And then the other way that, you know, which is what I have looked at and prepared, was what Eric also mentioned, which is the fact that we actually do have something in the books already, on the books. Section 255-1060 gives us the ability to maintain this registry, and that would, if we enforced this section, which we currently do not, we would have much tighter control over these locations, the carriers that are on these various towers, you know, the equipment that was on there. We would, you know, be able to monitor and inspect things. Right now, it says that we can do performance inspections, but I don't believe that we do. But an idea that Eric had was that in addition to starting to utilize this section would be to implement a fee also to be on this registry, that you would pay the annual fee, and, you know, it would take some figuring out how we would do it, but with the fee, then you could give the town any updates, any changes that have occurred in the past year, and then we still have this, you know, knowledge and control over everything that is out there in the town. That would be another way that we would be able to generate some more funding to, you know, help with the staffing issues. So what I presented, I emailed it around last night. I don't know if anyone got a chance to look at it. It's not extensive at all, and it can be changed, you know, depending on if we want to go this route, but I did just add language into 255-1060, adding a... go this route, but I did just add language into fifty-five, ten sixty, um, adding a section um, that the town board shall by resolution establish an annual fee to be paid by all carriers, subject to the registry requirements of this chapter. So that then by resolution, the town board could set up the annual fee. And then I also, um, added a penalty for non-compliance section, the town board shall by resolution establish a fee to be paid by any party who violates any section of this chapter. So there would have to be larger and, you know, longer discussions with the board, how we would come to those figures, but it would help, you know, make this section of the code something that's more valuable for us to be able to use.
Yep. Those of us on the committee thought this was a very valuable tool to be able to use.
Yes, and I I suspect that I have the same feeling that Eric has that if along with this fee came the ability for the town to process these applications more timely and to be more, um, applicant friendly, um, less board meetings perhaps for the, um, administrative ones and and, you know, better staffing to handle this, uh, you know, this workload that I don't know if the carriers would have that much issue with with paying the, you know, a a fee for the registry if what comes along with it is a lot, you know,
Right.
A lot better service that we can give.
And one of my last questions would be is, um, in the presentation, it stated that sometimes, uh, there's equipment that are on the current facilities that aren't, haven't been allowed through their their site plan and they don't have the proper site plan approval. So I would hope that part of this would be for the township to go out and try to get a baseline of what's currently out there for every approved site, uh, site plan right now. Uh, I think that would be important as as we move, uh, uh, forward also.
Yeah, and that's, that's part of the, you know, the registry requirements, I think could be, um, you know, that, uh, all the equipment has to be identified and, um, you know, of course, it's it's good to have those provisions, um, for penalties for non-compliance because as Eddie Schnell can testify, can testify, there there have been uh, certain locations where work has been done and Eric knows about this as well. Uh, where additional equipment's been placed on towers and in some cases has put those towers beyond their, uh, their rating, their rated structural capacity, uh, given hurricane standards and whatnot. So, and we've run into that in a couple of uh, situations. So, uh, it just really modernizes and brings up to date our understanding and, uh, uh, review of of these, um, of these, uh, infrastructure aspects within the town. And I think there's an opportunity to, again, have fees, uh, that reflect the additional resources that the town has to bring to bear to review and process these applications. Uh, if there's a way that we can do this in a comprehensive way, streamlining, I I I think, uh, this is certainly something that's that's long overdue and I'm and I'm very happy that the board has taken this up. And I appreciate the efforts of of you, Sylvia and David, along with our staff members and the other committee members, Eric and and, uh, Jameson to to help move this forward. Um, it it feels good to be sort of getting back to some normalcy here with regard to the town board's work. Um, you know, we've been particularly in my office focused pretty much, uh, seems like twenty-four hours a day on dealing with this COVID crisis. It's something we've taken extremely seriously and devoted pretty much all of our waking hours to every day, all day for weeks and weeks. So it it feels good to be getting to a point where we can start, um, you know, talking about other things that need to be done. So I appreciate all of your efforts on this. Um, are there any other comments or questions for staff or from the board?
So then as far as the legislation that Jameson made those minor changes to, is this something now we want to move forward with and notice for public hearings so we can?
I would like to move that forward. Yeah, I, that was one of the things that Jameson even said, if this would be a starting point for us. And I I would like to see if we could move that on.
Right. So the chapter two fifty-five, ten sixty, uh, updating this, um, and then, so it will take some doing, I think, to analyze and figure out what the, um, what the registry fees and penalties might be for non-compliance. Um, but since that would be something that the board could adopt by or amend by resolution, I think we could go forward with the, uh, with the changes.
And then lastly, I guess, yeah, in the median term, i- if the Jameson correctly, if I'm, or Eric, if I'm incorrect, but if the town would like to move forward potentially with hiring, um, an RF engineer, to find some of the sections of the township as far as coverage, that would probably be done through an RFP for professional services. Is that correct, Jameson?
Yes. I I think that we have sometimes in the past done, um, hired, um, professional services without doing an RFP, but I think that in this case we should probably put one out there. I, as far as, um, the research that this group has done, we don't know, you know, we don't have an an eye on a particular, um, firm individual. So I think if we cast the net large, we might get some, you know, good responses. That would be helpful.
Does that mean McLean doesn't have anybody on staff that does this?
I don't think so. Okay.
I don't know, but I'll check, Kathy.
One of, one of the other challenges, I think, with finding, you know, finding an RF engineer, uh, will relate to uh, whether or not they're conflicted out, given that there are so few carriers really and that this type, this line of work would often, uh, you know, be, uh, working for, uh, one of the providers. Um, so that might be a bit of a challenge, but we'll, we'll certainly follow through with that and see what what comes, comes back.
All right. So one thing that we can do, David, I don't know, um, we did have a sample of, um, some RFP language. I don't know if this group will probably want to get together and and fine tune exactly what we think we need and then maybe circulate it to the board. What do you want to do with that, David?
I I don't mind having another meeting through my cell phone like I'm on right now with you all, try to move this forward. Um, and, uh, we'll bring it back to the board. Yeah, Jameson, that works for me.
Okay.
And in addition to that, you know, the long-term goal here, it would be to have a wireless master plan um, as it relates to sections of the town code as well. Um, so that might be something we might also want to be thinking about in terms of trying to find somebody who can help us with that effort as well.
I agree.
So if the board, um, is comfortable with that, we'll, we'll ask the, the committee to, um, continue to pursue those two efforts. And, uh, I appreciate all of your work on this. Again, it's, it feels like we're getting back a little bit of normalcy.
Yeah.
As a result, so that pretty much concludes the, uh, work session agenda items for today. We have, um, normally we would do liaison reports next. I don't know if anybody has anything to report beyond what we've already talked about.
You know, I just, I do, I want to talk about the Montauk CAC and we, um, didn't meet, our meeting was supposed to be yesterday, but, um, I did, uh, yeah, both Diane Hausman and I, um, you know, made sure that we contacted our CAC's membership, that we talked to them, um, through emails. Um, they now have all of the information to contact me if, uh, they need to call my home phone. They can have call my, call my landline and my, it's my home phone. They can, uh, you know, reach me through Gene Hudson, um, uh, our business phone and also through email. But one of the things I think that they're concerned about and that I heard over and over again in some, some emails and some conversation was the social distancing at beaches. And, uh, although the signs were appreciated that, uh, David, thank you so much for working on that to get those signs up there. And although they appreciated it, they, you know, are still concerned that there are too many people gathering together um, or seemingly gathering together, although it could be just a group of family members and it it looks worse than it really is. It's just, you know, um, mother, father, uh, you know, adult children and perhaps their children all living together at the moment. Um, the other issue was, uh, David, you brought it up in the sanitation department. People are just throwing their gloves and their, um, wipes down on the ground. So if you would please, please, please pick those up. If you have a car, just dedicate a bag to just those items and then throw it away responsibly and not leave them on the ground. Uh, there have been several people that have been upset about what they're seeing with people just throwing gloves and things on the ground because if they're on the ground, somebody has to pick them up. And you don't need to be exposing other people to what, um, germs are on those gloves. So, uh, I just wanted to bring that up. I know our citizens in Montauk are concerned about different issues um, from the social distancing to the sanitation to, um, finding out if there's a testing site, you know, closer to home, which there is now in Riverhead, and I sent them all that information as well. So, um, you know, just wait, just be in touch. I think communication is probably the thing that people are wanting to have most of all right now.
Well, it's a good segue, uh, communication wise to just again emphasize that the town has a website, which is ehamptonny.gov and you can sign up for alerts, both emergency alerts and other alerts about, um, breaking news. And we are posting all the latest information about what the town is doing in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic as well as, um, a number of important links to help our citizens get services that they need or require. Small businesses uh, are eligible for a number of programs to help them out during these times, as well as individuals who might fend themselves out of work. So, um, there really is a compilation of a number of different, um, links and sites that you can be directed to to help you during this time or help inform you. Um, so that's ongoing. Um, and again, we'll be posting, uh, numbers on there as well as to the trajectory of the pandemic within Suffolk County and within the town. Try and keep our citizens, uh, apprised with the best information in a most timely way. You know, one of the things that that happens, the dynamic that happens is obviously a number of people are are very concerned and anxious as they well should be, particularly people who may be in, um, you know, the most at-risk, uh, groups, whether that be immunocompromised or having some other underlying health conditions or being of a certain age. Um, I think, uh, you know, that creates a lot of anxiety and, uh, when people see others out and about, uh, it, in some cases, it makes people feel that uh, those, those folks aren't taking it seriously. Where they may not actually be putting anyone at risk. It is okay to go out and take a walk with someone from your household or your family. Uh, you're already living in close quarters and as long as you're socially distancing from other households and other people that, uh, you could be out, uh, and safely recreate. Again, we urge everyone to be very careful about coming in contact with those who are outside of your household. You know, I think that is exacerbated by people's anxiety. Uh, if you go to any road end in town, uh, where the road meets the water, you will find a number of cars parked there on any given nice day. We see, you know, the number of of vehicles in those locations rivaling our summertime. So I think that makes people feel like, you know, uh, there's business as usual, um, which may not be the case. What we have, uh, code enforcement, the police department going around constantly, uh, checking public places to make sure that the governor's order is being abided by, that there is social distancing and no gathering. But, um, it is okay again, as you, if you're out within your own family group or household group. But again, let's, uh, let's be very careful about that. I've had some people, a number of people calling and saying, why are people out? They shouldn't be out. Again, we are recommending that you don't go out, that you stay home and stay away from public places as much as possible. But again, if you're abiding by those, those safety protocols, it's probably healthy to get out, get a little fresh air, a little exercise. So again, we'll, uh, we're going to continue to enforce the no gathering. And, um, to date, uh, the chief and I, as I said, are in constant contact. There have been very few, um, examples of gathering that did, that actually were, um, uh, in violation of the governor's order. We had like only one landscaping company who, uh, was building a retaining wall, which is not considered an essential at this time. Uh, and they ceased and desisted, not requiring any further enforcement. At this point, we are primarily keeping our efforts to informational, um, just, you know, telling people that they should abide by these, these rules and, uh, we're getting very good compliance. So uh, again, I think it's incumbent on everybody to take responsibility uh, during this time to ensure the safety of themselves and their health and that of others. Is there any other comment or liaison report? Kathy, you go first and I'll give you Jeff.
I I was just gonna make a suggestion because those town alerts are really helpful and folks feel reassured, Peter, when they hear from you. And I know that you've been making, um, you've been doing radio shows at LNG and WPPB and you're going, you go on LTV. And maybe we could also extend it and use those alerts to let folks know that you're going to be, you know, on the radio because you know, it's, it's nice to hear from you and be reassured like that.
So, uh, thank you for that, Kathy. I will say that, um, every Monday morning at eight forty AM, I'm on WLNG. Uh, I was on this yesterday morning and, uh, my internet went down and that since that's how my landline works, I lost connection. And ironically had to use my cell phone to dial back in to get on the show. So that was kind of a turn of, uh, events that one wouldn't expect. But, um, I've also been on, uh, WPPB on Wednesdays at nine, ten AM. Uh, I was considering putting together a video and posting that on the website and on social media. And, uh, as of this morning, I gave myself a haircut, so I guess I can go ahead and I can go ahead and, uh, and do a video now. Um,
Your broadcast ready?
Yes, it's, um, I'm looking a little closer to David now. But, uh, yeah, I think it's helpful to, uh, to to get, get the word out to folks and, uh, is there, uh, Jeff, do you want to, you wanted to make a comment?
I just wanted to say that, uh, uh, we actually wound up meeting, um, at the Wayne Scott CAC. Uh, and we did a remote, uh, meeting like we're doing for town board. I think they uh, were, were eager to meet and connect and it, I have to say it was not business as usual. Um, the mood is definitely different and uh, there's good community solidarity in Wayne Scott and I think they're uh, have a heightened concern because we have a member who's, uh, a member of the Wayne Scott CAC who's pretty seriously ill right now with, uh, COVID. And, um, they're gonna put up, uh, a, uh, a banner or a sign at the Wayne Scott Chapel to thank all the volunteers and frontline people that are helping the community, uh, stay together. And we were talking about, um, the importance of, uh, neighbors, uh, staying in touch with neighbors because as we move on in this, uh, pandemic, that kind of very localized information is going to become very important. It's going to help us identify who's sick, um, who needs help, who needs food, who needs, uh, maybe some company and comfort. So it was, um, it was very, uh, moving actually to be able to sit, uh, with with the group again and see all the familiar faces. And I think we're going to continue doing it. And, um, they're looking into ringing the chapel bell, uh, which apparently they thought was frozen, but now it appears it can, can be rung. They may reach out to, uh, the clerics in East Hampton to discuss, uh, some kind of gesture to let the community know that we're all in this, uh, together. So it was a very good meeting and, um, good to see, good to see friends again, even if it's on screen. I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Thank you, Jeff. And and with regard to potentially ringing that bell, um, there has been, um, at Fridays at seven PM, uh, the, the local fire departments have been putting on their sirens and toning, um, at seven in acknowledgement of all the first of all the first responders and, and healthcare workers that are helping us through this very difficult time. So please consider cheering at 7:00 p.m. on Friday evenings. That's a weekly event. At this time, are there any other reports from board members? Again, I just, I just want to, you know, wish everybody the best and to stay safe and stay healthy, help keep your community healthy. It's so heartwarming to see so many people coming together and reaching out to me in my office and to the other Town Board and community members, offering their help, offering their resources. You know, right now, our, our focus is on getting through the health crisis. And that's the primary job that we're doing, is to try and ensure that we get through this health crisis portion. But there's a huge economic issue that we will have to be dealing with once we get beyond the health crisis. And so we will need to continue to focus our efforts on reestablishing our economy, both locally and, and nationally and globally. And we will be in this for a while. And we'll need to be thinking of creative ways to get ourselves back on our feet as soon as possible. And, you know, that's going to require some additional sacrifice. And it's going to require that people open up their pockets and, and lend a helping hand to others so that we can get back to normalcy as soon as possible. So I, I think, I think everyone, the community has come together to help in this effort. We're going to be in this for a while together. But I think, you know, these kind of times, as they challenge us, they will also make us much stronger as a community. And I feel very blessed to live in this community with, with all of you. So I really miss seeing many of our town workers and day-to-day, and, and all of you in person and, and many of my friends. And again, I think it's a time to reach out to your friends and your family, to be introspective and think about what's most important in life and focus on the positive. So at this point, again, I just wish everyone be well. We have a few resolutions to do, and then I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
We have Resolution 2020-443, which is to retain Savick and Murray to do engineering plans. We're going to be soundproofing a portion of the airport terminal to provide a little better protection for the workers there. And it authorizes Savick and Murray to undertake the engineering in the amount of $12,650, with incidental expenses not to exceed $1,500 for a total cost not exceeding $14,150.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed and carried.
Resolution 2020-444 is to renew our contract with Plain Noise, which is one of the reporting firms on aircraft-related noise complaints. It's a continuation of services at a new rate of $1,525 a month, plus a Montox fee of $428 a month. And it, the total authorized cost here is $23,436 a year. And that's it.
Second.
Do I have a, all in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carried. Resolution 2024-45 is to authorize agreement with Esri Arc GIS Maintenance, and that is at a cost of $900.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. 446 is to accept proposal from Civic Plus Audio I Service, and this is with regard to making sure that our town website is meeting all of its requirements under the Americans with Disabilities Act. And the cost of that additional work on an annual basis is $3,500.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. 447 is to retain Dan Redzo, Whitman, Orstman, excuse me, Osterman, Hannah LLP as counsel. And this is not to exceed $40,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. 448 is to authorize extension of contract, Brittany and Bowles Software, and this is not to exceed $990.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. 449 is Green River Cemetery, additional plots available, and this is to set the fee, the rate at $1,500 per plot.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. I'll entertain a motion.
Peter, can I just say one thing, just to let folks know that we have two meetings scheduled for next week? We have a work session scheduled on Tuesday, April 14th, and a Town Board meeting scheduled on Thursday, April 16th. In both meetings, we've moved to 11:00 a.m.
Thanks for, thanks for doing that, Kathy. I appreciate you. That was something I had forgotten to mention. We are going to resume our normal meeting days for our meetings, but the new time on each of those days will be at 11:00 a.m. since everybody's staying at home anyway.
And, and the reason was because we need the bandwidth. We find that if we do it later, that we're having some technical issues and that if we do it during this time of the day, we're not having as many technical issues. So I, I did send an email to the Montox CAC and said, our Thursday night meeting is moved to 11:00 a.m. So.
So that, so that you can watch your Thursday night movie instead.
Anyway, so I do make a motion that we go into exec session for contracts outside council and personnel. It is now 12:37. Do we want to just jump into it now or to come back? What's, or how, how does that work?
I, I say we go into it now, and if we need to take a brief break while on exec, we can do that.
Okay.
So Jason, if you would cut our live feed. Again, everybody stay safe, be well, and we hope to see you soon.
Bye, guys.
Thank you.